...meeting for February 14th. It's all about love today. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number two, changes to the order of the agenda. Mr. Malpe.
Yeah, we have two changes this evening, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to continue item four A, which was a discussion comment that Councilmember Grocott, who was unable to join us this evening due to a family emergency, had asked be on the agenda. And item 10 C, which is a consideration of setting a public hearing on April 11th, 2011, to consider increased rates for residential and commercial solid waste collection services pursuant to Proposition 218 to our February 28th meeting.
Excellent. So those will be continued. When 10 C comes up, if there are people who do want to comment, I realize some people may have shown up for that reason, we will take those comments, but that will be continued. Item number three, reports from closed session. Mr. Rubens.
No reportable action from closed session.
Thank you very much. Item number four, council communications and announcements. I'll start from the left. Mr. Rice.
One quick line. Happy Valentine's to my sweetheart at home.
Mr. Klein?
I got nothing after that.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this evening either after that.
Actually, Mr. Klein, you did have something you wanted to...
Oh, I was going to wait for you to start the discussion, but I can jump in.
I'll go ahead. Mr. Klein.
If the council will bear with me, this is mainly directed at our city attorney. Mr. Rubens, who you've heard this saga, but I have to fill in our council members so we can hopefully have some action on this. We had an interesting comedy of errors happen in regards to a BCDC seat that came open for nomination for the South Bay. I'm sure you all received the email where South Bay and the West Bay seats were open for elections to be nominated to go before the executive board and be selected. In the letter that was sent out by ABAG, the eligible cities for the South Bay were listed as Belmont, Redwood City, Menlo Park, and East Palo Alto. Prior to reading the letter, because I figured we were eligible for BCDC, I spoke to Becky Romero at the county and let her know that I was interested in running for the seats. She said that was great. I asked her, what does require a letter of intent, as you get from people who are interested in going to countywide seats? She said, no, it was going to be a floor vote on January 5th, so all you had to do was get nominated for the floor, and then people would elect then. She called me back about five minutes later and said, oh, by the way, San Carlos isn't eligible. I asked why, and she said, well, it's probably because you don't touch the Bay. And as we've been dealing with the levy issue, I refuted that and said, we did touch the Bay. But I let it go at that, going, that's weird, maybe we're in another district or whatever. Our mayor attended the meeting where the election was held. The two cities to run for the seat were Belmont and Menlo Park. The mayor also found it odd that we weren't eligible to run for a seat where our neighbors to the north and neighbors to the south, Redwood City also was eligible, were eligible. So we continued to push and ask what happened. Pat Jones had a discussion with the chair of the council of cities, who was Christine Kralik at the time, and mentioned that BCDC had sent them the list of eligible cities and omitted San Carlos. That San Carlos was eligible, but we were omitted. And they decided there was no need for reelection due to the fact that the interviews for the actual selection were going to be on January 10th. There wasn't enough time. So we sort of let it go at that. We were informed that I could become an alternate if I wanted to. The alternate would be picked by the initial seat that was selected. The South Bay seat ended up going to Councilwoman in Newark. We had had discussions, we were going to meet about me possibly being selected as the alternate because the person who gets the seat gets to choose their own alternate. She then called ABAG, and ABAG informed her that we were now in the West Bay. We were not in the South Bay. And we were now in the West Bay. And also that Belmont was in the West Bay, and I thought that was weird because Belmont ran against Menlo Park for the South Bay seats. So this continued to happen. I spoke to Will Travis from BCDC, who's their executive director. Will Travis was very, I would say, aggressive. He was not happy that anyone was calling out that there had been mistakes made. He pointed to the state code, and the state code only says that north of Redwood City is part of the West Bay, south of the northern border of Redwood City is part of the South Bay. I pointed out that the border of Redwood City goes to Redwood Shores, which is north of San Carlos. So are we in the South Bay or the West Bay? And he didn't have an answer, and he said, well, that's up to ABAG to decide. ABAG said it's up to BCDC to decide. So we have a letter that says that we're not in any district, and I have a list sent to us from ABAG that now puts us in the West Bay, where the letter indicates that Belmont's in the South Bay, but Belmont on the list is in the West Bay. So I would like to inform our city attorney to make some calls, do what you do, and find out where we are, find out how long this has been going on. Because there's a lot of concerns. We are running elections that cities aren't eligible for. We are being told that we're not eligible for elections when we actually are. Who's in charge? You have an executive director pointing fingers saying, no, it's not me, it's not me, it's them. And ABAG's pointing back at the executive director of BCDC saying it's them. And we've been put into two different districts that we don't know which we're in in a matter of a couple of weeks. So there's absolutely no transparency, and I'm quite concerned because we do have a right to attempt to have some representation on this board. And from everything I see, I have no idea what's going on.
Mr. Rubens.
Well, I think the best way to handle that is for me to do some investigating and then report back a future agenda for your consideration of what I've come up with or what facts I've found. And then you can decide what to do at that point in time.
That'd be tremendous. We look forward to that. I think one of the concerns we have with BCDC is an interesting new-ish agency that has been attempting to extend powers in terms of how cities can deal with development and the theoretical rise of San Francisco Bay. And there is, in some cities, they're saying that the jurisdiction of BCDC and what they could do with development may extend as far as El Camino Real. So every city along the peninsula is concerned about what's going on, and from our perspective, we'd like to know, number one, which district we're in, and who's our representative? So that would be great.
And thank you all for bearing with me. I know it's an incredibly confusing story. I don't understand it all, so thank you.
Lots of alphabet soup. It's all good. Few announcements. We do have a next meeting. The San Carlos City Council will be meeting in our every six-month retreat. This should be on the second floor of the library. Is that correct? And it'll be on Friday. We generally start in the morning at, I have the agenda...
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty. These sessions set up the goals for city council for the next six months related to our strategic objectives. Again, this will start at eight thirty. For those who show up, you can probably snag a couple of pastries or so, and we look forward to seeing you there. The State of the City address will happen on March 3rd. It is a Thursday. We're breaking the tradition. It used to be a breakfast meeting. Instead, we're going to do an afternoon mixer. The cost is fairly minimal. It's $10. It is being sponsored by The Chamber, A+ Japanese Auto, Hiller Aviation, and some good folks. The idea is also that there will be displays from local businesses. We do want to talk about economic development.
Mr. Mayor, where is that going to be?
That'll be at the Hiller Aviation Museum. That side of 101. Terrific museum. Also wanted to let everybody know, I do sit on the Samtrans Board. Samtrans has a citizens advisory committee. It is 15 members who are specifically looking at transportation issues in San Mateo County. The applications are due March 4th. We do have an opening on the Planning Commission. Applications are being accepted. I'll look at the city clerk to see, what is the date for that?
Friday, I believe. I believe it's until Friday.
Please get your applications in by Friday. And that is where we will leave it. Moving on to item five, public comment. Public comment is for persons wishing to address city council on matters not on the post that agenda may do so. One thing I do want to make a comment to members of the public and staff and also my colleagues on the dais. Public comment is comment. It is not a Q and A time, or it's not a dialogue period. If people are asking questions, we may refer them to staff, but this is not a dialogue. So moving with that, I don't have any cards for public comment. Appears that Mr. Randall would like to speak. Mr. Randall, Happy Valentine's Day. You're recognized for two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Brian Randall, and I live in San Carlos. Gentlemen, is Valentine's Day right now? This is the opportunity of a lifetime. Kiss and make up with Belmont and pull the letter of dissolution. I spoke at the last meeting of Belmont City Council, and I'm going to read to you what I said. Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Brian Randall. I live in San Carlos. Our Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department is the best. I am every optimist. Irrespective of your other opportunities, I ask you to leave the door ajar so that the letter of dissolution could be withdrawn by San Carlos. A member of Belmont City Council said to the press, there is still a chance the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department will not be dissolved. Again, I say, pull the letter of dissolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Again, there are no further public comment cards, any further public comment. Seeing none, we will move to item number six, consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the council staff or public requests specific items to be removed for separate action.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items 6A through F.
I'll second that. And let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott is absent. Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Mon.
Yes. Item number seven, reports to council. Mr. Malpe.
No reports this evening, Mr. Mayor.
We are cruising. Moving to...
There you go. That's where it starts.
Yeah, until it starts. Item number eight, it's a public hearing. This is item nine, I'm sorry, 8A. Consideration in the introduction of a proposed amendments to San Carlos Municipal Code regarding wireless telecommunications facilities in Title 18, Zoning, Chapter 18.118, and Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Chapter 12.32. Ms. Nelson, good evening. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Glad I'm in the appropriate color. Tonight, we have before you a recommendation from the Planning Commission on our existing amendments to our existing telecommunication ordinance and other amendments to the municipal code to adopt regulations for telecommunication facilities on public lands, including rights of way and land that the city owns. There's a need for changes to our regulation because of changes in technology. Our ordinance was adopted well over a decade ago, actually in the late 90s, and then amended once, but needs amendment. There's increased use of personal technologies, and there's been several case law decisions since we last amended it. Also, in our existing ordinance, we lack performance standards, there's inadequate definitions, and permit specificity is lacking. Also, the council has stated some specific interests that you'd like covered in your telecommunication ordinance, that the state-of-the-art technology puts an emphasis on smaller and stealth facilities with the least aesthetic impact, that there be upgrades to smarter and greener technologies when change out of equipment occurs, that there be periodic mandatory reporting regarding compliance with both federal and city regulations, that there are requirements for providers to consolidate equipment, that there is evidence of locational need and alternative site analysis, that there's notification to the city and to the neighbors when work is being performed on-site. This is just a good neighbor kindness policy. That there are performance requirements for providers, and this applies to the providers' contractors, because that's most of what this industry is based on, is contract service. And then for the community at large, that there's a provision of wireless communication service, which results in fewer drop calls, and at a level which adequately anticipates more conversion from landlines to wireless. So we looked at the regulations, and the new ones have addressed these issues, including more specific definition, there's private and public property processes, there's exemptions to reflect smaller technology, performance standards, there are findings within the ordinance, and there are application requirements specified upfront. We typically, we've gotten kind of caught, and we keep asking for information. And then development and maintenance requirements. And we developed these regulations based on recent models from communities who have addressed, some of them been subject to the case law, but have addressed the issues. And basically, this model sets up kind of two major aspects in the regulations. One is design preference, and there is a ranking from the most desirable kind of design to the least desirable kind of design. And as you have been briefed by your city attorney before, absolute prohibition is not permitted in our ordinance. So by setting a design preference, you then direct where you would like things, how you would like things to look. So the first preference is integration into structures or buildings, also then on roofs. And then there are locational in 600 feet from residential districts, or non-residential structures 600 feet from residential. Then regarding locational preferences, the locational preferences basically emphasize the east side of Highway 101 and then moving west. So the airport lands, industrial lands, then commercial lands, and lastly, in residential neighborhoods. If you remember, I should have brought our land use map, but if you remember our land use map, however, most of the city is painted the color yellow, which is residential, and it happens also to be most of the high ground. So we do see lots of applications, even though our locational preference will say, put them in the lower lands in the industrial and commercial districts. You'll see, the Planning Commission sees many applications on high ground in residential So we also have facilities on existing city property. And last, about a year ago, year and a half ago, we started getting applications for the right-of-way, so we're suggesting that you also adopt a telecommunication ordinance into Chapter 12, which deals with public spaces and right-of-ways. And that you amend, you just basically eliminate what now exists in Title 18 and adopt a brand-new ordinance. So now I want to show you some visuals of what this would look like, and then I'll wrap up quickly. This is an example of an application you all saw. It's a co-located facility. So there is preference for co-location. It's a water tank site, and there are at least three providers on this site. So the ordinance would say that this would be preference. Co-located site, co-located facility, this is a pole that has two different providers on it. Then regarding exempt facilities, this is a radio receiver. It's exempt. So is your satellite dish on your own home. That would be exempt. And this is important because we, our current ordinance addresses those satellite dishes, which used to be 10 feet in diameter. Those I hear are very valuable, and there are some people who really like them, but most of the community uses this facility, and we'd like those to be exempt. This is at the City Hall site. It's also exempt because it's emergency equipment for police and fire. Also, when there's a change out, you saw this earlier this summer of equipment, these boxes became these boxes, that kind of activity is exempt. Changing out colors from this T-Mobile facility, from a white color to a green color, that would be exempt. And then there are provisions for minor permits. This is on industrial. It's difficult to see, I know, but it's roof-mounted. It's in the middle of the building. It's not really that visible. I'm standing kind of on my roof of the car to see it. So it would be a minor permit, as would this existing facility is a minor permit. And these on rooftop, which are painted to blend. Use permits, because this one is a greater kind of facility and more of them, and there is a height here that would put it in the use permit category. This facility that the ordinance has a preference for, it would be more stealth. This was a proposal which didn't get approved. In fact, it became this, which is a broadleaf mono tree, and that got approved by the Planning Commission. It would require a use permit. On the public right-of-way, this facility is a minor permit and an encroachment permit, and it would fall under the new Chapter 12, should you adopt it. Also, this kind of facility would be a minor permit if it is, it's a co-located on a PG&E pole. This was the subject of a lot of controversy 15 months ago when they were proposed in residential districts. So there's still a use permit requirement when they're in residential districts. This facility at Burton Park requires a use permit and a lease by our new ordinance. And then just some examples of what stealth facilities are beginning to look like in the industry. This is a redwood. This is a pine. There is a current application before the Planning Commission for one of these facilities. Palm, we wouldn't expect necessarily in San Carlos. We have, most of our palms are the one on the right, at least the hillside ones, the fan palm rather than the feather palm. But there might be a situation when we think that's appropriate. And then they're getting much more sophisticated in how these things look with lots of leaves and lots of branches, and making them much more realistic. We also address some of the previous issues that were part of these use permits regarding follow-up and identification of who's responsible, so we know who to call. That there, another issue that came up is language in the code that made sure upfront we wanted them to look at more stealth and appropriate colors. Also, in the ordinance, that maintenance of equipment is required, and also maintenance of landscaping. So we took things that, over time, we've been putting as conditions of approval and put them, embedded them right in the ordinance, so the providers knew what they were getting into, and we had less of an issue with trying to get compliance with conditions. So the Planning Commission looked at these regulations, and they considered a couple of amendments to what we proposed. One was that they felt that there might be a time when the 60-foot-five height limit could be adjusted because of topographical issues or its location, and if the provider showed a locational need and a distribution at that height, at a height higher than 65, they wanted something in the ordinance that let them do an exception to the height. There's also a preference that we had proposed that anything in the public right-of-way be underground. We were advised by the industry, any of the equipment boxes be underground. We were advised by the industry that that really ends up to be a room underground about the size of a normal living room. And so that would extend way into the street. The Planning Commission then felt that if this equipment could be adequately screened, then there could be an exemption for having the extra facility underground. The industry also suggested one way that we could follow up and find out who's in charge would be to require them to have a business license annually. So that was a good suggestion from them, and the Planning Commission said, thank you very much. And then there is, and this is common in most ordinances, there is a, what we read in other ordinances is peer review. The Planning Commission said, you know, it's really a technical review, and we want to be able to choose who that is and not have to determine what a peer means. So they put provisions for technical review to be required at certain milestones. What they did not do, there was some comment from neighbors who were requesting a fall zone equal to the height of a pole, and then maybe some feet beyond that, which would be an additional setback requirement. And the Planning Commission felt that the building code is the operative criteria for those standards, and that these things are designed. There are soils reports and engineered reports on how stable the foundation should be, and that a fall zone for safety purposes was unnecessary. There also was a, in our, looking at other ordinances, we had put in the public right-of-way ordinance that a use permit requirement, actually in both ordinances, there'd be a use permit at the Planning Commission when any facility is within 600 feet of a residential property. On the public lands and right-of-way one, one of the agencies whose ordinance we looked at also required that that same requirement be applied to parks and daycare centers. And the Planning Commission decided not to put that in, that there was an implication that the city has the authority to monitor health effects. We do not. The FCC determines what's healthy and what isn't. And that most of our daycare facilities and parks are also 600 feet, within 600 feet of residential, and that the staff would be crackerjack, and if there was one that wasn't 600 feet, we would bring it to the Planning Commission anyway, because we have the authority to bump things up. So, and with, I also should mention that you have an email that was addressed to me, but it's germane to the issue tonight, and there, I think Mark Weinberger is in the audience, was from him regarding a couple of the issues that I just mentioned, that the Planning Commission did not incorporate into the ordinance regarding fall zone and use permits. So with that, this is the motion to adopt amendments to the municipal code in the zoning ordinance with a new, replaced chapter, Title 18.118, for wireless telecommunications facilities, and adding a new chapter, 12.32.
Ms. Nelson, I guess it's introduce, not adopt.
Yes, pardon me, introduce. You adopt the next time you see it, maybe. So, yeah, whoever reads the motion, if you get that far.
They'll do the kabuki, and we'll figure that out.
Thank you, Denver.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. This is a public hearing. I have one speaker card for folks who do want to speak. Again, there are some speaker slips on the little podium right there. Please fill it out, bring it up, we'll take your comments. Margaret Jadala, if you are here, please come up. Anybody else cares to speak, please step forward, and we'll start the train going. Ms. Jadala, good evening.
Good evening.
Happy Valentine's Day. You're recognized for two minutes.
Thank you, same to you. The reason I'm here, I live in San Carlos, and actually, this adventure will happen right in my backyard. I live on 886 Heather Court, and, well, I, we have seen one big problem when we first moved there almost 50 years ago. There was just one water tank. And then now we have three or four, and that diminished the property value quite a bit, and a lot of problems also. But that's besides the point. I just hope that we don't have to go through this again, because it's, there's many hazards. I have read about it. It's fire hazard and the waves, you know, the radio waves. I don't know what all, but I would very much hope that the city does not adopt this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jadala. Thank you, Ms. Jadala. Mike Opelonek, followed by Mark Weinberger. Did I get that right? If he could go ahead and come up front, sir. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm concerned whether this telecommunication ordinance has been taken out of the Zoom-in-on-zoning process that allows multiple public and city council reviews. Last year, during a stakeholder meeting with Mr. Diette, who was hired by the city council to formulate our new city ordinances, was provided numerous examples of other California cities' telecommunication ordinances. None of those examples seem to have made it into this document you are reviewing this evening. Here are just a few observations. Adequate setbacks for cell towers in residential areas of San Carlos. A setback that has a public safety fall zone for cell towers, not only to protect property and life, but also as a zone large enough not to disqualify homeowners from FHA loans and our more elderly population from receiving reverse mortgages. Another is an upgraded noise ordinance to take into account new wireless technology. As an example, the city of Portland, Oregon, had a tremendous amount of trouble with clear wire installations along public right-ways, placing noisy wireless boxes on utility poles just feet from residences' bedrooms. The noise ordinance in Portland, similar to San Carlos', was not adequate for the buzzing and humming these boxes produced so close to the residents' homes. It caused the city and residents many problems. Lastly, a missing requirement for green technology to reduce energy requirements, carbon footprint, and the unsightly clutter of towers and wireless facilities. According to the wireless industry, by 2015, traffic will increase 30 times in volume. To address this, according to Lucen, Alcatel, Ericsson, equipment suppliers, to Verizon, Sprint, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile, the need for new towers, such as we know them today in urban environments, will all but disappear. Unless the city of San Carlos requires, through this ordinance, installation of wireless providers that are of green and efficient nature, much like you do for other building structures in San Carlos, the wireless providers will install the cheapest, dirtiest, and most inefficient structures just to get service in. These types of installations do not have synergies with the city of San Carlos' general plan.
Last, if you will, wind up if you could.
One sentence. I request the city council place this telecommunication ordinance back in the Zoom-in-on-zoning process for additional view. Thank you for your time, and here are some articles to support my comments.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. And please help me, Mr. Weinberger?
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 What's up?
Okay. Oh, there isn't anyone there. Okay. Very tiny. Happy Valentine's Day, sir.
Yeah, happy Valentine's.
And you are recognized for two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mark Weinberger, and I'm a resident of San Carlos. First, I would like to thank the city for being proactive on this issue. These new regulations are a good start, but unfortunately, I feel they do not go far enough to protect residential areas. So I'm here to request a review and reconsideration of an amendment to require increased setbacks for communication towers to allow for a fall zone of the height of the tower plus 10 feet to the adjacent residential buildings. Communications towers are industrial structures which require heavy equipment to install and maintain, such as cranes or welding gear. It is well documented that this results in hazardous conditions which would otherwise not exist. These towers can and do catch on fire from mistakes made during regular maintenance, faulty wiring, or lightning strikes. They can also topple due to extreme weather conditions, such as high winds or storms. When these accidents happen, towers present greater risk than residential structures, and they fall like a pole and are nearly guaranteed to hit something at least as far away as the height of the tower. So for the safety of the area residents, it is both reasonable and sensible to require increased setbacks. Other communities have adopted this policy, and a setback of the height of the tower plus 10 feet appears to be typical. Secondly, according to the HUD website, if a house is inside a tower's fall zone, it will not be eligible for FHA-backed loans. This will have a devastating effect on the value of the home, as well as the owner's ability to refinance, et cetera. Allowing this to happen would be extremely unfair, and not good for the residents, the neighborhood, or the city at large. And finally, there is an aesthetic benefit to increased setbacks, as the tower will be further from view. Residences will no longer have to worry about a cell tower being installed just a few feet from their windows, which has occurred in the past. So I think it is clear that this would be a reasonable and sensible addition to the ordinance. The only real objection to this proposal was raised by the city attorney, Mr. Rubens, who stated that the city hadn't studied this proposal enough to make sure it wasn't an outright ban on cellular sites. My response to this is simple. Emerging technologies will soon eliminate the need for most towers. YMAX, for example, has a reported tower range of 30 miles. And Lucen just announced last week new technology, which, according to the Wall Street Journal, shrinks a cell tower down to the size of a Rubik's Cube. So this would eliminate the need for towers altogether and allow for much more easier integration into existing structures. So options exist for providing cellular service without the need for tall towers, and we should take measures to ensure that these options are taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The gentleman's time has expired.
Have a copy of my statement and supporting documents.
Please. James Favures, followed by Fareed Yavari. Mr. Favures, did I get your name correct?
Favures, yes.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day to you.
And you're recognized for two minutes.
Okay. My name's James, and I'm Favures, and I live in San Carlos. And I'm also concerned about these cell towers coming into our neighborhood as we received notice, I don't know, it's been a few months. But I've gone around with Mark and my wife just to see what the neighbors had to say. And it was quite unanimous that every neighbor did not want a cell tower in the neighborhood. Not one person coming to these meetings or going around the neighborhood has ever come up to this podium and said, "We need a cell tower in our neighborhood." So I'm asking you, please, don't let them put these cell towers in our neighborhood. We don't need them. You know, it's zoned for residential neighborhood, not for somebody to make money on these towers. And that's what I'm concerned about. Don't give in to these companies, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The gentleman yields the balance of his time. Mr. Yavari?
Yavari, yes.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day to you.
And you are recognized for two minutes.
Thank you. So I'm a resident of San Carlos. I moved in San Carlos in 1986, over 24 years ago. I raised my family here. And recently, there is a proposal that put a cell tower just 15 feet away from my fence. And I'm here to ask you to please consider the setbacks that was turned down by the planning commission, so that, you know, the cell towers cannot be built so close to our fences. And, you know, we have, you know, we've been going around the neighborhood with James and with Mark. And like James was saying, you know, we have had some readings, and, you know, there's a lot of documentation that goes along with this. But to cut it short, you know, I'm here just to ask you to reconsider, you know, the fall zone and the adequate setbacks for these towers, especially when the tower is 45 to 50 feet high, and it just towers over my house and, you know, into my living room, into my bedroom. And, you know, it's just something that I would like you to consider as far as, you know, adequate setbacks for these towers in residential areas.
Thank you very much, sir. Gentleman yields the balance of his time. Pat Bell. If there are other folks who would like to speak, please get your speaker cards together and come on up. Ms. Bell, happy Valentine's Day. You're recognized for two minutes.
I want to support the gentleman who suggested that this should be part of Zoom-in-on-zoning. I happen to be in the same small group he was in when we talked to the gentleman who's doing the Zoom-in-on-zoning. And that guy is a real expert. I don't know why on earth we want to do this without his input and without integrating this into the rest of our zoning. It doesn't make any sense to leap into this and then pay him to do a coordinated zoning plan for the whole city after you've hatched in some ordinance that may or may not be what he would recommend. He has a lot of good ideas about how to do things. This is what he does for a living. I suggest you listen to him, give him a chance to tell you what can be done about this.
Speaker yields the balance of time. And Mr. Randall, you're recognized for two minutes.
Thank you very much, Brian Randall, San Carlos. As you know, I've spoken on this before. I'm very glad I don't live on an antenna hill. Some of the previous speakers have beaten me to it on some of these points, but I'll go through them anyway. Last week in the press, I saw that an electronic unit the size of a Rubik's Cube is close to completion, putting out the same amount as the ironing board-sized antennas presently mounted on tall poles, which presumably will make the poles redundant. I think that's tremendous news, and I hope that's successful. They can be mounted low on the buildings, on the fences. I think we should go back to the planning again for review and consider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gentleman yields the balance of his time. Any further comments? Attorney General entertaining motion to close public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing. Second.
Without objection, that will be the order. Ms. Nelson, let me turn it back to you. Any final thoughts, and let's get some questions.
Well, just look to respond to a couple of comments, and then I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Please do.
The council asked us to pull this out of Zoom-in-on-zoning. It was also to coordinate it with that activity. And we did use the staff of Diette and Batio, who is going to update this as part of the Zoom-in-on-zoning, to help us create the ordinance. And they did look at the most recent Glendale, Berkeley, others that the community in the stakeholders interviews had suggested they look at. Palo Alto also. Regarding the noise ordinance, it sits separate from the telecommunications ordinance and applies to all activities throughout the city, and we will be looking at if there are updates that are needed for that. We've included, however, in this ordinance, very strict compliance criteria with our existing noise ordinance, including that we get information every three years about compliance, and also, within 45 days of any installation, we get a report that lets us know that they are in compliance. Otherwise, they got to go back and fix it. Thank you.
Can we ask questions?
We can at this point. Mr. Klein, seems like you're ready to go.
Ms. Nelson, I just had a question to something you said. You mentioned that the staff or whoever worked on this looked at the Glendale and the Berkeley ordinances and the handful of others that have been suggested. I understand that they looked at them. Why doesn't this go as far as those do? Those are much more stringent ordinances than this is. So, I mean, granted, looking at something is one thing, but incorporating something's different.
Well, I think it is as stringent with, with the exception of some of the communities have, in essence, prohibited telecommunications facilities by a fall zone or setbacks. The geography of our community makes that very, very difficult. We have high sites that are existing utility sites. We have an ordinance that supports co-location. We've got many instances of co-location. And it's our, and maybe Mr. Rubens would like to comment on this also, but we want to be careful not to, in essence, put a ban on certain locations, because that would be illegal.
Mr. Rubens.
I can add to that. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 has constrained local government review of cellular antennas. We are not allowed to take into account the health effects of these antennas. I know there's a lot of data and information that's available that people have been pointing to, but it's just simply outside of our municipal purview. We have been preempted. What we can look at is aesthetics, and that's, I think, a large part of what this ordinance is attempting to do, is deal with that aesthetics issue and to deal with basic health and safety noise, like noise, issues that we talked about, but not related to the electromagnetic spectrum. The Telecommunications Act also has another feature that constrains the city further, and that's what I'll paraphrase as a non-discrimination rule. We can't discriminate amongst the providers. So there are multiple national providers that provide service, and that was one of the intentions of the Telecommunications Act, to create competition. So that's why we have Sprint, that's why we have T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Verizon, all providing wireless services in our area. We can't say to any one of those carriers that you can't have an antenna that serves this area of our community. And so, in other words, if Verizon has an antenna that serves one neighborhood of San Carlos and T-Mobile wants to come in and also serve that neighborhood, we have to allow them to serve the neighborhood. It's constrained by our ability to talk about aesthetics. But if, after review of the data, and that's what this ordinance is also trying to beef up, is our ability to review the data of coverage, what adequate coverage is in a particular area. But if we can't show, if the provider can show us that they don't have adequate coverage in an area, that will trump our aesthetics review. And we're basically at the aesthetics review as to location of the antenna. We can still, the ordinance also has all this, all the issue of shielding and monopoles and monopines, steffing, the stealth Slimline pole and the palm trees and all those things are our last stand against an ugly antenna, if you will. Now, there may be some new technologies that will come out in the future, but this ordinance is to deal with the here and now. We get applications, we've gotten many applications in this past year. We, at the staff level, felt that it was appropriate to get an appropriate and more modern ordinance to the council to deal with this exploding area of technology and applications. We are going to get more of these applications. And if we wait any longer, we'll still have our old ordinance, and we won't have the tools that we have now, that we will have should the council pass this in order to deal with the different multiple types of placements, the aesthetic issues, and the effects on the residents as far as aesthetics. The last issue that was brought up in the correspondence about the fall zone, it's my opinion that because of the geography of San Carlos, that having a fall zone of 75 feet or more on some of the areas that would be available for cellular sites, having a fall zone would rule out having anything in the right-of-way, any of these stealth poles that are on top of public utility poles. Those would always be within a fall zone if they were in a residential area. The utility pole itself is within a fall zone. Many utility poles would, if they fell over, would impact a home. And so, we felt that would definitely prohibit that type of installation. And then what we'd be left with is the, what many of the applicants, many of the applications that provide is the water company sites that happen to be on top of the hills, which also, it's great for having a water tank on the top of the hill, because you have gravity to get the water to our residents. Well, these same sites also provide the best unobstructed signal to the largest majority of residents. And each of these sites is different. Some sites may be less than 75 feet across, because they're basically a residential lot in a residential neighborhood that's being used for water tower. So many of the sites have water towers in the middle of the site. Many of the sites have plumbing and other equipment that would prohibit a placement. So I was concerned that having a blanket fall zone restriction or setback would violate the Telecommunications Act by effectively restricting the provision of wireless service in certain areas of town. We also might have the impact of... We also might have the impact of the nondiscrimination provisions in the act. We have other providers that are providing service in a certain area, and we would then have potentially with a setback limitation, we might be prohibiting other providers from providing service in that area. I know that's somewhat of a long-winded answer, but the ordinance is taking into account what the federal government has given us, the authority to deal with. There's not much more we could do. If the council were inclined to do a, have a fall zone or a setback requirement, we would have to go back and review all the potential sites in town to make sure that there was an adequate provision of cellular service. And that might be difficult and expensive to do because each of the providers have different technologies that they provide. I already mentioned that we would, having a fall zone that dealt with the public rights-of-way areas where installations might be, would definitely prohibit those types of installations. So, we really would have a major problem. It's probably not outright prohibited by the law because we would tie up, or we'd tie that analysis to aesthetic concerns, but we'd still be up against the effective prohibition if those aesthetic concerns led to an inability to develop a site that was required for coverage.
Mr. Williams. So, I have a question. So, based on the topographical nature of our city, based on what mainly is set up in the hills, you're saying that's the major issue with the fallback zone is a lot of these sites, they have to be in residential areas.
Well, yeah, absolutely. To get the coverage in the residential areas, they, in the way our, the way our city was developed, we have a concentrated commercial zone in the east side of town, and then most of the west side of the city is residential.
Okay. And so, my question is, as someone who has family who lives in both Glendale and Berkeley, they're in the hills too. So, how is their ordinance not illegal or hasn't been challenged yet?
Oh, they've been challenged. Berkeley's been challenged, and their ordinance was changed in response to the legal challenge.
So, if we did this, it would get wiped out?
If we did, if we, we could be challenged if we had an applicant who could prove that they were not able to provide coverage in a geographic area because of the fall zone or setback regulation.
Okay. Mr. Royce.
Well, I had a question on the setback. Some of the people discussed it. I think Mr. Rubens addressed that quite well. Thank you.
Mr. Grisilli.
I'm looking. Chairman, I think I only had a comment. It was regarding the, there were a few folks that were talking about green and efficient. One of the things I do know is that we have a number of different providers who have different spectrum. So, while you might be able to say that this particular antenna can come from something about the size of a Rubik's Cube, well, which spectrum does it work in? Does it work in CDMA? Does it work in TDMA? Does it work in GSM? Is it WiMAX? Is it 4G? Where is it? One of the things that you will find, at least for these guys who are public, they've got to report their earnings every quarter, so keeping inefficient, broken gear doesn't work for them because truck rolls are incredibly expensive. So, the opportunity to upgrade equipment to hopefully make it a little bit more robust and a little bit more efficient is probably where they're going to go. I was heartened to hear about the, about the noise ordinance and that we will be getting another bite at that. But I essentially didn't have any questions. I think the only other point, I understand completely the notion that nobody wants a cell tower in their neighborhood. I've actually got one about 400 feet from my door, but I actually like the fact that my cellphone works. And what we do know is that landlines, in terms of people who are moving into residences, are not getting landlines. They're keeping their cellphones, and that is their primary telecommunications device. So, the fact is, we are seeing growth in wireless. We are seeing growth in the fact that folks want these devices, and that service needs to be provided, and we have a federal mandate passed down by Judge Green that says that we have to do it. I guess one question I'll have for you, Ms. Nelson, is that given this ordinance, this does not preclude further review in the Zoom-in-on-zoning. Is that correct?
Well, we wouldn't necessarily, because we expect this to come to you by September. Unless there's some change in case law or technology that we missed, we wouldn't necessarily open this back up. But if you wanted us to, we could certainly, yeah. But we pulled this out separately on your direction, like the SIGN ordinance, which is also in place, and a couple of other ordinances that we're not going to be looking at because they're relatively new.
And one odd question, how does this affect ham operators in San Carlos?
Ham operators are under their own regulations, and they're generally exempt. We do require them to be able to, they can, they can have a crank essentially and have a very high tower, and then they need to put it down. But there are a couple in the community, and they can put them in because they're regulated by the FCC, not us.
Excellent. Thank you. Any final comments from the dais?
No, I just, go ahead. No, I was going to introduce ordinance number?
1429.
1429, ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, commending San Carlos Municipal Code Chapter 18.118 and adding Chapter 12.32 for regulation of wireless telecommunication facilities from the City of San Carlos. And also, as the mayor said, I was on the planning commission in 1994 for six years, and I know Mr. Rubens remembers, we dealt with this issue the same way. As the mayor said, the federal government has precluded us in so many of these decisions, and that's the bottom line on all this. Anyway, I introduce the motion, or ordinance, rather.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that ordinance.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just.
Mr. Klein.
You know, when we had these, a couple of cellphone towers came up, I took a pretty strong stance on it, and while I'm going to vote for this, I'm not happy about it. I understand where the community is. I actually don't have cellphone reception in the majority of where I live, and I don't know if I would trade that for a facility outside of my home. So, I feel for you. Unfortunately, we are, as Mr. Grisilli said, we are precluded from really weighing in on any of this. I think this is one of these ordinances that needs to be reviewed constantly as technology changes, and the minute we really can start making a move, we have to, because technology grows so fast that at some point, I do believe that while they, we have made advances, we're not there yet, but we will be there very quickly where these things will not be needed. But Mr. Armon, our mayor, is right. Everyone relies on cellphone. I don't have a landline. My wife doesn't have a landline. None of my friends have landlines. We need cellphone service, but it's just, it's a shame, and this is the price of doing business, but I definitely feel for the residents who have to put up with these things. But I will be voting in favor of it.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to also say, I think our community, San Carlos, has a tremendous thirst for digital signals in our house from Super Bowl and American Idol to cellphone coverage to kids in middle school that, what, text 50, 60 times per day. People do talk about their cellphone quality of their service. I, you know, we need to be really careful. I think this, the planning commission has done a great job in a lot of changes here on how to control and monitor all of these. I think technology for the future, I read that same article in the Wall Street at the end of last week, this Rubik's Cube. Being in a past career of working with a lot of R&amp;D people, I think it's great, but of course, when they talk about the three or four real advantages of this, where you're going to have this size of this, you could throw up on top of City Hall and run the whole area, there's also a lot of testing that needs to be done. There's a lot of volume of production and costing and so forth to get it to where it's going to be. So, even though it's hopeful, the bottom line is there will be technology and there will be change, but we can't work this evening on something that's still somewhat a dream in an R&amp;D lab right now. So, with that, I will be supporting this.
Well, we had a final comment that some months back, we had a challenge with a SIGN ordinance. There were some interesting lawsuits that were put in front of us. The council acted quickly to update its ordinance and make things work. In this particular case, what we have is an ordinance in front of us that we have tried to push through fairly quickly so that we actually have some tools, some ability to handle some of the aesthetic things that we think we can legally deal with at this point. This is not, obviously, the end of the story. There are going to be more opportunities to come back and look at this, but right now, let's get this thing in place so that we can actually start to address these applications that are coming in and have a better ordinance than what we had previously, which was pretty antiquated. With that, we'll call the question.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Armon.
Yes.
Where are we?
9A.
9A, thank you. Unfinished business, presentation of the marketing branding reports prepared by North Star Destination Strategies Redevelopment Agencies. Mr. Swicki, what, how much time do you expect on this presentation?
Five minutes each? Well, no, for my part of it.
We've got 9A.
For 9A, five minutes.
Well, you know.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Agency Chair, Council and Agency Board Members, Mark Swicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. These next two items on your agenda are continuation of strategic initiatives around business retention, expansion, and attraction that began with the Economic Development Advisory Commission's draft marketing strategy in 2008, followed by the development of action steps that appear in the RDA's five-year implementation plan, the city's economic development plan, and the council's six-month strategic objectives. Primary goals of these efforts are to increase sales of San Carlos businesses, especially taxable sales that will support the general fund, attract a greater share of customers from San Carlos and neighboring communities, attract more business-to-business sales within San Carlos and the region, increase the retention of existing valued businesses, attract complementary businesses, and develop a cohesive, consistent branding message, materials, and implementation strategy that is compelling to both consumers and businesses. In July 2009, we engaged North Star Destination Strategies to conduct research and make recommendations. Staff has provided you with two final reports, prepared by North Star, a Brand Print Report and a Brand Amp Report. The Brand Print Report includes a compilation of the research and survey work, including dozens of interviews, 83 responses to a stakeholder survey, 759 responses from a community online survey, and 388 responses from non-residents regarding consumer awareness and perceptions of San Carlos. The Brand Print Report is 115 pages long, plus appendices. It's available in PDF form. It's also in print at the front desk and at the library for the community if they are interested in delving into it further. Among the many interesting findings, probably the biggest takeaway is that San Carlos is not very well-known beyond its borders, and there's a great opportunity to shape its distinct brand and to build awareness for the great things that we can offer. North Star extrapolated from its research to develop a brand platform and some marketing language which centers on San Carlos' ability to balance a close-knit hometown atmosphere with an environment for achievement, both personally and professionally. This concept came up again and again in the research, both from residents and the business leaders who have chosen to locate here. The second report that North Star provided was the Brand Amp. It provides their recommendations and ideas for implementing a brand awareness and marketing campaign. This report was reviewed by EDAC at their recent meetings, and EDAC provided staff and council with some recommendations for moving forward as follows. Number one, EDAC reaffirmed their approval of the strategic brand platform and the theme of balance, as well as continuing use of the tagline, "The City of Good Living." Number two, EDAC requested looking at more options for the logo. The bench concept that North Star had come up with from their process did not resonate well with residents, business, and community leaders, and that's been recognized. EDAC would like to see new options tested with target audiences before selecting a final logo, and suggests this as step one for the implementation phase. In review of the Brand Amp, EDAC made suggestions to alternatively eliminate, combine, defer, or expand on the objectives that North Star presented, as well as adding some others, such as a redesign of the city's website. These suggestions were incorporated into a proposal prepared by Look Design, and this appears as the next item on your agenda. This concludes my report on the North Star reports, and I'm available for your questions and comments before moving on to the presentation of the Look proposal.
Before we move to that, we do have one public commenter, Pat Bell.
I'd like to see after the Look part, I'm sorry.
After the, after Look part, okay.
You can put me in there.
Got it. Mr. Royce.
Yeah, can I make comment on the survey itself? I'd like to thank citizens of San Carlos, all the citizens. I believe there were almost 750-plus of our citizens voluntarily responded and provided input to the consultant. That's a tremendous response. In fact, I think the report said the consultants couldn't believe how many people responded. And let them know, I'm not going to discuss the items here, but the strategic planning that we have going on later this, this week, there are actually three or four ideas from the survey and the consultant's report that actually triggered a few ideas and maybe some priorities, or some things we need to be thinking about beyond the branding, marketing area of San Carlos. So, again, I do want to thank the citizens of San Carlos for their good work on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Just to bring up something that Mr. Swicki spoke about, I made an unfortunate comment to a newspaper reporter likening the bench to a movie by Tom Hanks. I didn't want to slight anyone's work, I just really didn't like the bench, so, sorry about that. But I'm glad you're changing it, so, looks like we're on the same page. That's all I got.
Can't follow that.
And we shouldn't. Mr. Swicki, if you'd like to continue.
Thank you again, Mayor and Chair. The Economic Development Advisory Commission staff are recommending approval of a $150,000 contract with Look Design LLC for augmentation, and for augmentation of the capital projects budget by an additional $275,000 over the next three fiscal years. This would provide an effective, sustained, multi-year implementation, including costs for collateral materials and ad placement. There is no general fund impact for this initiative. However, a major objective of this program is to expand San Carlos' economic base and thus increase general fund revenues from sales tax, property tax, and hotel tax. Funding for this comes from the redevelopment agency, which is restricted to funding economic development and certain capital improvements. There is a remaining balance of $325,000 for marketing and branding efforts that was previously allocated through fiscal year 2013-14 in the capital projects budget. As noted in my earlier report, business retention, expansion, and attraction are key to the city's economic development strategy. Implementation of a marketing and branding initiative has been a goal of the RDA's five-year implementation plan, the economic development plan, and most recently, council's six-month strategic objectives. Look Design LLC is a local San Carlos business that was chosen by a selection committee in a competitive process to be the city's implementation partner in this initiative. Look has many notable clients, including Cisco, Visa, Brocade, Sequoia Hospital, Town Restaurant, San Carlos Parks Foundation, and the Chamber of Commerce. The Look proposal includes a scope of services, including development of logo options, a brand toolkit, business retention and attraction materials, advertising content, and a redesign of the city's website. It does not include the cost of outside vendor fees for production of materials or for placement of advertisements. To be effective, a marketing program needs to be a sustained, multi-year effort with adequate budget to produce these materials and place ads, banners, and signs. At this stage, there are only estimates of what these costs might range. Actual costs will depend on a variety of factors and decisions to be made later in the process. EDAC has recommended augmenting the capital projects budget to accommodate a potential range of total costs, that is about four times the Look fee proposal. This new budget amounts to about 3% of the city's sales tax receipts per year. In theory, then, the city should expect or try to get an increase in sales tax revenue by more than 3% as a result of this investment. I did some brief research into what private industry spends on marketing costs, and it revealed a range of anywhere from 1% to 20% of sales revenue, most falling between 2% and 10%. There was an online forum that contained advice from nine different business advisors and showed a consensus around 3.5%. So, we think that's a pretty good number. Besides growth in tax revenue, we can also measure the impact of these efforts by reduction of sales tax leakage to other communities, as well as by conducting a follow-up consumer awareness and perception survey several years down the road to see if it had an impact. This concludes my report, and I'd like to introduce the principals from Look Design, Mary Schwedhelm and Betsy Todd, and provide them with an opportunity to present their company and work to you. I'm available for your questions and comments either now or after their presentation. There are also three members of EDAC in attendance tonight if you'd like to hear further about their input on the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day. We were told that we had five minutes, so...
We were told that we had five minutes, so this is going to be a speed date.
Sounds excellent.
Get to know Look.
It's all about love.
Do we, do we just click?
Click on it.
Here we go.
Well, your time is up, but thanks very much for coming.
Would, would you tell us when to Look?
We will. Look will tell you when to Look, Ryan.
Mr. Mayor, while they're out there, they could introduce themselves so we know who we're speaking to at some point.
Oh, I'm, I'm Mary Schwedhelm, and this is-
I'm Betsy Todd.
So, one of the-
And let me ask you both to speak into the microphone so-
Okay. One of the things that Mark didn't tell you was that we are both, not only do we have our business here and have had it here for the last ten years, we're also residents and have lived here for the last, myself thirty years and Betsy ten. So, being here is a real exciting time for us, and we're thrilled to, to get, to let you get to know Look a little bit. And the best way to do that, of course, is to show you, show you our work, so that's what we're going to do tonight. This is just a list of our services, and we are an advertising, branding, and marketing agency. We have a complete list of services in those areas, and I'm not going to read them to you, but it's complete through branding, any, all sorts of advertising and, and marketing, marketing materials, developing marketing materials. This is just a kind of a real quick visual of the, kind of the, the high-end clients we have. We have some all smaller and mid-sized clients that we'll show you later on, but just so gives you some sort of confidence in the fact that we work with large brands, we're stewards of large brands, and we, we're very comfortable in that space along with smaller brands. This is our San Carlos list of brands, so you might, this might be more familiar to you, they're local brands that we've worked with and we've gotten to know and have helped their marketing efforts and branding efforts as they've been operating in and around San Carlos. So, we're just going to show you some really quick. This is definitely a speed date because we're going to fly through this. If this was in a corporate setting, we'd probably take an hour. So, Brocade is a client of ours. We do, we're their brand stewards, we're their, basically their extension of their internal creative services department, so they trust us to steward their brand. This is just some of the materials that we work with for them. So, everything from their brand guidelines and overseeing their brand implementation through online materials, their emblem system. Visa is another client we work with. We do card designs, consumer, so we're both business-to-business work that we do for them and consumer, consumer work, so B to C. This is a series of ads that we work for Visa through one of their partners. Also, event marketing. Visa's sales presentations and PowerPoint presentations, very, very important part of our business is helping our clients sell to very high-end clients. It's, it's a way of getting in front of people for the first time and making an impression which we think that San Carlos also, we have a PowerPoint in our proposal for San Carlos. This is us helping Visa pitch to Williams and Sonoma. Wells Fargo also, we've, they've been a client of ours for ten years. We do, we're working right now on their messaging hierarchy for home equity. We've done many, many numerous projects for them. KLA-Tencor, we repositioned in a market that had nothing new to say. We took a very tired, tired brand and gave it, gave it life and through the, what we call the B, the B campaign, launched them at CDS, developed their corporate brand guidelines. Santa Clara Health and Hospital System is one of our nonprofit clients. We are their primary branding agency, their primary advertising and marketing agency. We rebranded them, and we work on a, basically a daily basis safeguarding their brand and doing brand materials for them, online, print collateral, wayfinding signage. We're working on a huge wayfinding signage project for them right now. They asked us last September to come and help them with the H1N1 flu virus, how to get into, how to get that, that message out to high school and colleges. They had no idea. We were brought in, and the strategic point of view is how do, how do we, how do we reach these kids? We decided, let's let the student councils do it, let's, let's put flu prevention in a box, develop it, I mean, deliver it to all the student councils before school starts and, and let them do their own programs. So, we had T-shirts, we had, you know, we had Facebook. And the idea was, you make me sick if you come to school sick, so, that was the concept. And this looks familiar, doesn't it, Brian? This was one of the presentations, this was the winning presentation of what we did for the South Bay Waste Management Authority when they had to launch, when they wanted to launch the, the food scraps campaign. Their whole idea was save the planet one banana peel at a time, feed the pale, feed the planet. That's when the, the pales were on everyone's doorstep, and ended up on garbage cans. Here, our work gets into the finest places in San Carlos. This was one of the other alternatives, just to show you that we never give you one solution, we give you way more to choose from. This was one of the other presentations that we gave them. They chose the former. Be Smart was a campaign we did for Sandisk for one of their channel marketers. And this is kind of to show you just a broad range of everything on one page, where you have, you know, you have print ads, you have a website, you have online advertising, and then the, the brand up the top that we, we sort of marketed this, branded this category as a smart USB drive. This is a message map. This is also one of the items on our proposal that sort of gets everybody on the same page saying the same thing to bring, build brand equity around. In this case, it was around Be Smart and, and the product, USB Drive, and in your case it's going to be around, our case is going to be around the city of San Carlos. So, everyone says the same thing, and everybody is just really building brand equity. City of San Mateo we did several years ago, and they were going through redevelopment downtown, trying to live in their downtown. Fun project that we got to do for 24-Hour Fitness, trying to get more of a guerrilla outdoor campaign, getting people to the gym. They had people, members, but they just weren't getting them into the gym, so that was kind of get-to-the-gym campaign. So, Betsy's going to take you through the local clients.
So, we have the privilege to work with a lot of local clients. These will all be, people will be targeting and helping to target in your brand campaign. We do a lot of work with Sequoia Hospital, work with them really on a weekly and daily basis. We developed the brand for them that represented the community. We also work a lot with the foundation. This will be our fifth year working on their annual report. We also did work on the San Carlos Parks and Rec Foundation to help with the deficit of funding Burton Park, so we came up with a campaign for that. We also do work for, you know, clients within the industry that we're trying to target and also target outside of San Carlos, so we know a lot about, like, for example, this, the building industry, the east side. There's a lot of revenue and tax revenue to be had there, so, you know, we work with those clients and understand a lot of the business needs and concerns. We work with DaVinci Marble, helping with their advertising and sales. We also do a lot of pro bono work within the community. This is a sample of something we did for the San Carlos Children's Theater. We developed their brand, helped them to put it into all their marketing materials. We also work with merchants on Laurel, so we're working with Lulu's. We're actually doing a new Facebook campaign. We named it the Salsa Galsa, where they're going out and picking certain people in the community, profiling them, what's their diciest moment, which we developed the copy for, and then that leads Facebook people into a coupon to go to the restaurant. So, we, we're helping businesses on Laurel get more business through social media. And we also worked with Town, Cowabunga. And then identities, I think the point here with Look is, really, Look has no Look. The Look should be the marketing objectives of the client. So, in your case, the City of Good Living, we give lots of options, so hopefully, our goal will be to give you lots of options back on what the new identity could be. So, you'll see there's some here that you recognize. And then, Mary started to talk a little bit about us, just to give you a quick background. Again, we have a combination of thirty years living and working in the city, so that does give us a unique insight. We definitely do know San Carlos. We also take pride in the fact that we serve, you know, clients from San Francisco to Silicon Valley. So, we are kind of the local balance agency, if you will, between the two. We know the key targets, as we've demonstrated in our presentation. Like Mary said, we, you know, live in the neighborhood. She, all of her kids attended private school, mine are attending public school. We have a lot of perspective between the two of us and our agency, and we've developed, you know, public sector brands, so I think we're the right fit. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Let me go up and down the dais. Or actually, let me get public comment very quickly if I could. Ms. Bell.
This is all well and good, and the presentation was wonderful, but I hope these ladies know that there may not be an RDA. We may not get another dime. So, whatever Mark has in the bank may be it forever for affordable housing and this project and any other projects that the RDA wants to do. So, I think signing contracts and anticipating that you're going to spend half a million dollars that you don't have and you may not ever have is pretty dicey.
Speaker yields bounds of time. Mr. Randall, are you speaking on this agenda item or the next one? Mr. Randall, you are recognized.
The only branding I know of is in westerns, but I do know San Carlos is the city of good living, period. Other cities want our title. Only the city of paradise is better. Thank you.
Gentleman yields bounds of his time. Gentlemen, we are currently meeting in this item as the RDA, so, just with that, as we move forward, any questions? Mr. Grisilli.
Mr. Swicki, we're signing, if we approve this item, we're signing a contract for $150,000? Correct. And then, with, is there like an option for the remainder, or will this, then after a year, we'll come back and look at it and decide whether we want to add on, or what's the, I guess, the, the review time? For Looks, the Look piece of this is $150,000, and that covers their agency fees. It does not cover costs associated with- Right. -creating materials and placing advertising. I get that, but it's for like, is it for a timeframe of a year, or is it? They would probably carry out their activities over, I would say, a two-year period. I'm not sure we-
This contract?
Yes.
This, this is nine months.
Nine months.
I mean, we can-
Understand. I'm just, I'm looking at the fact of we're going to be getting back, we're going to be looking at this. I mean, it's not like that, I mean, I know these ladies, so it's not a problem if they're not going to Cabo next week, but the point is, I'm just trying to identify the fact that we're going to be spending this money if we, if we approve this, and there's going to be a review in a certain amount of time. We're going to look at it and say, okay, there's going to be, again, we have to pay for deliverables, but there's going to be things happening that, that, we're not necessarily committing more than the 150 at this point. Is that correct? Correct. Okay. And then, there certainly could be additional dollars spent, and I read that, and I understand that. I just want to make sure that we've got a, sort of a system built in that this is going to be reviewed along the way. That's all. Yes. Okay. Thank you. That's all. Our intent would be that this would be coming back to EDAC on a regular basis. Right. And, and, while, while you mentioned EDAC too, and I, I certainly have to mention all the hard work. Again, we, we make decisions up here, but a lot of times, as usual, the staff and EDAC did all the heavy lifting. And so, I want to make sure they get, they get kudos for that, you guys and EDAC for all the, all the hard work that went into this. Thank you.
Mr. Royce.
Yeah, one question. You know, normally, in fact, when we looked at this a year ago, we'd, we'd step from phase one to phase two. The, the consultant's report, you know, my own opinion, somewhat on the weak side. Some of their knowledge of San Carlos showed, their, their lack of knowledge of San Carlos, and Mr. Klein, and I'll second his comment. They came up with one logo, a bench, which is basically a picture of a bench. It's about 50 feet right outside these doors in our park, which is a common bench, and the graphic doesn't even match the bench. So, my concern is to determine the next steps for the implementation in the report. We're putting Look, and I have faith in their knowledge and what they're going to be able to do, but aren't they starting like four steps before go? I mean, aren't they kind of completing some of the undone work that our consultants did? And how does that figure into how, what they're going to do? Are they able to do that? And, you know, where do we go from here? I want to make sure that we know, is this phase two, or are we still kind of the tail end of phase one? And how does that fit with our consultant, our new consultant?
The benefit of the NorthStar piece of this was mostly the research and the, the branding message, which I think everybody involved agrees with. One of the things that they caution is don't get so focused on the logo. However, the logo is what everybody ends up focusing on. It's important to get that right, but it's not the complete package.
So, that was not part of their contract, is to provide settle on a logo?
It was. They offered, they offered several alternatives.
Okay. I believe we've kicked that bench over, so-
Yes. We reviewed several alternatives, and that was the best of the alternatives after hashing it out over several meetings at the selection committee level and at the EDAC level, and then we also brought it to council. In the time since we've done that, it still hasn't resonated. We've had that time to reflect further and want to look at more options. Many times with NorthStar's other communities where they've done this, the community did not use the logo that they came up with. They used a lot of, of the materials and the message, but not necessarily that logo. They used some of the same colors, some of the same fonts, and they encouraged that. They say, please take this as our recommendation, but do with it what you want-
Okay.
-and trust your local partner to, to carry it forward.
Okay. And so, the main question is, our partner has that expectation?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. No benches, huh? Okay.
Might have been a box of chocolates.
Mr. Klein?
It's just a bad comment. It wasn't a badge, I see no box. What I was, I'm going to say, I'm going to echo a lot of what Mr. Royce said, so now that that's cleared up. I was wondering if the commissioners from EDAC had anything they wanted to add in, as they were the ones with staff who really kind of focused on that, or if you guys are just happy to listen to us talk about it, that's fine, too.
Happy Valentine's Day, Mr. Mayor. Happy Valentine's Day to you, sir.
Thomas Duson, San Carlos EDAC. I joined the process only last year, so I was not privy to the information that was presented to EDAC, in fact, at the start of the process, but I would like to add to Mr. Swicki's comments. I think, and to echo Mr. Councilman Royce's concerns, it is very evident that maybe we got 80% of what we contracted for with NorthStar. And the remaining 20%, I don't think they would have been capable of delivering because they're not local, they're not from California even. Look has shown a little more creativity in that front, and so, we are looking to them to move forward in that capacity.
Thank you.
And if you have any other further questions during your deliberations, please feel free to call on us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate all the work that EDAC has put into this, too. It's, it's great to have your commission and everybody else just backing us up. Your work is incredibly important, and I'm looking forward to having lunch with Gary, I think, on Wednesday. I've been meeting with all of the commission chairs over the last couple of weeks. Gentlemen, any further questions? And what is the agency's pleasure at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt-
Resolution.
To, I guess this is an adopt resolution. Mr. City Attorney, we can adopt this one?
Yes.
Resolution number RDA dash-
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Resolution of the Board of Directors of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency approving agreement with Look Design LLC for economic development, business retention, expansion, and traction services, and augmenting RDA capital projects budget.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
This is a resolution. Roll call, please.
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Klein?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
Chair Ahmad.
Yes, resolution is passed. Item 9B, consideration of approving the vehicle asset distribution recommended to the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, and authorize the city manager to execute the truck purchase proposal submitted by the Belmont Fire Protection District. Mr. Moore, happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Happy Valentine's Day to you. Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. We're here tonight to talk to you about the vehicle asset distribution report. This was initially developed by the staff of the two cities and the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department as part of our dissolution calendar. Staff met late- Staff met late last month to review a report by Fire Chief Fry. The chief worked with a company named Fire Trucks Plus that specializes in the sale of used fire apparatus and vehicles. Mr. Batista from that firm reviewed all of the existing apparatus and vehicles and placed a value on them. We then worked with Thomas Phil, who is the controller for the BSCFD, as well as the finance director in Belmont, who listed all of the debt obligations on these vehicles. And as you see in the attachment, this is the list of the vehicles as the two city managers met, and I guess what could be described as something analogous to the NFL draft, and one by one took turns selecting equipment. In this process, the city of San Carlos will end up with three pumper engines and four light utility vehicles. Belmont will get three pumper engines, two ladder trucks, four light utility vehicles, and one pumper engine. Two vehicles are being surplus. You'll note in the economic analysis and the staff report of the seven vehicles that San Carlos is getting, we are also receiving $151,859 in cash, is a function of the formula between the two cities. And so I guess the summary here is, we're getting seven vehicles for a net cost of $48,000 over the next seven years, or to put it another way, we're spending $7,000 a year over seven years to get seven vehicles. Seems like a pretty good deal. This list was approved unanimously at the last meeting of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Board last Wednesday, and it is recommended to you tonight by the Fire Board. It was the consensus of the three staffs that we bring this to you under section 4.2 of the Fire JPA, the so-called major decisions item. Even though it is not technically a major decision, we thought that as we begin the dissolution process, it was appropriate to bring something of this significance to you. I'd like to also point out that we have shared a copy of this draft list with both of the groups that is considering providing service to the city of San Carlos in the future, that being the Redwood City-San Mateo Local 2400 group, as well as the County of San Mateo and CalFire groups. They each have a list of this, these vehicles and apparatuses, they do their work. Turning for a moment to the new aerial tractor truck, which is being delivered later this week, it was important as part of this process to determine which agency would receive it. Under this proposal, the city of Belmont will receive that vehicle and also will assume the debt on the vehicle. The way the staff report is structured, we're asking you to authorize the city manager to sign a legal agreement. That legal agreement is yet to be drafted by the three attorneys, namely the JPA attorney and the attorneys representing San Carlos and Belmont. So if you tonight vote to ratify this agreement, it then goes to the Belmont City Council, acting as the Belmont Fire Protection District on February 22nd, and if they act and approve it accordingly, it then goes back to the Fire Board at their March meeting, at which point it'll be finalized, and the agreement for the new aerial truck will be drafted. So those are the highlights, and as always, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm through the chair. Just to add in for the, for the Fire Board discussion, yeah, it was unanimous. There was a handful of questions just about debt ratios and stuff like that, and the impetus, of course, for all this was the Tractor Dawn aerial truck that we're buying. We had to find someone to take it. It was either going to be us or Belmont, because the company would not take, the financing company would not finance the JPA since it is breaking up.
Right.
And just on a side note, the one thing that's noticeable, and this got brought up during the meeting, is these things really don't hold their value too well, so as we have our own fire department, we want to look at the difference between financing and actually buying them. You know, you have things that have a lot more debt than they're worth now, and that's just a discussion we're going to have to have.
Notice that.
But that's it. And it was 4-0, everyone. So Belmont is going to discuss this tomorrow, correct?
No, February 22nd.
Twenty-second, okay.
Further questions?
I just, Belmont's going to assume the debt on this, on this new vehicle that's being delivered.
Mm-hmm.
If something happened that this didn't go, all this didn't happen, go through, I would assume that we could have a sidebar agreement or something that, that they would make with us or whatever, that they would not be liable for, necessarily by themselves for this, for this vehicle? Well, what they're going to propose as part of this agreement is that the Fire JPA rent the vehicle from them between now and the dissolution date in October.
Okay.
They will also assume the debt on all the other vehicles listed where there is a debt to Vice Mayor's point. I presume that if at some point alternative arrangements are made for fire that does not involve a contractor, does not involve one or both cities setting up their own agency, that's the sort of thing that could be discussed later on.
Right. I would, I would think it would be. You know, I've never, as well evidenced, I'm not necessarily in favor of all this dissolution at all, but I appreciate all the work that's been done by staff and by the Fire, our two representatives on the Fire Board to put these items in motion. Whatever happens, these things have to get done, because you cannot wait till the last minute to do it. So I appreciate the hard work that's been gone into this, and I will vote for this tonight, although, again, reserving my right to try to figure out another way out of this situation. So, thank you.
Now, it looks like we have, Mr. Randall, go ahead and stand up. Mr. Randall, you're recognized for two minutes.
Brian Randall, San Carlos. Gentlemen, our Fire Board members, Commissioners Ahmed and Klein, have opened Pandora's box, but there is still hope. Pull the letter of dissolution. Thank you.
And hold on a second. Pat Bell, you're recognized for two minutes.
Since Matt isn't here, I just want to second what Bob said. The dissolution is a bad idea. The hard work of the staff is commendable. They, I don't know how they're getting done, what they're getting done, but they are obviously working hard with the attorneys, doing a good job, but it's all for a purpose that should never have happened.
Speaker yields balance of time. Gentlemen, all we need is a motion for accepting the staff recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify this agreement for the exchange of equipment.
Motion is made. Do I have a second? A second. Is there any objection? That'll be the order. Moving to item 10A, consideration of a process funding proposal for gateway design improvement and implementation plan.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave the last item, I just wanted to make sure that the motion included the requested authority for the city manager to sign.
In the opinion of the chair, it was for the city manager and the entire thing. That was the motion. Ms. Nelson, welcome back.
Thank you.
And approximately, how long is this presentation?
Oh, short, short, and most of
Love it!
Yeah.
It's all about love tonight.
So this is in response to one of your strategic plan objectives, to look at gateways, and we found a cost-effective way to do that, at least to look at design, and we're suggesting a collaboration with the local chapter of the American Institute of Architects, who would help host a design competition. Gateways are identified in the general plan with those asterisks. There are primary gateways identified, five of them. These are most iconic of the features that occur in gateways, and there are other features in the community as well at these primary ones. Secondary gateways, there are six identified in the general plan, and these, there are some gateway features as shown on the bottom at Industrial, at the Redwood City border, and the top at Crest View, where it's actually, what I don't show is the hetch-hetchy pipes there, was kind of the feature. Then there are other gateways that have been suggested to us by the GESC and the airport for Oak County Road and the entrance to the airport, and these have features that are sort of either not appropriate or not sized well or lacking. The general plan also has a typology of gateways that describes features which could include signs, structural elements, fences, towers, landscaping, architectural, significant buildings, and this is where this collaboration comes into effect, or landmarks such as statues and major works of art or historic buildings, those sorts of things. So the proposed process would be AIA would help us, they would invite the American Institute of Landscape Architects and our local artist community, they would help us put together a brochure, invite participants, up to 15 participants. There'd be a Saturday day where we go around to each gateway, and they're hosted by staff and, and other community members. And then there would be a judging day, presentations and a judging day, and then a booklet of prototypes, be it landscape or art installs or sort of architectural design. There'd be a presentation to the city council, and there would also be a cost estimate for each of these prototypes, which would be quite helpful to us. Then the next step would be, we would come to you with funding option proposals in, in our budget evaluation. So it's cost-effective, it's a $5,000 expense which can come out of the community development professional services existing budget, and we hope you agree with us that this is a good first step on approaching gateways.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Gentlemen, any questions? We just need a simple motion?
Just a comment. Ms. Nelson, and for the staff who works on this, this came up a lot during our general plan process. We talked about the gateways and talked about our existing gateway features, and one of the things, and I know we're going to have a competition, so hopefully we'll see that, one of the comments that constantly came up was, our gateway features aren't welcoming. They just say "city of San Carlos" as opposed to "welcome to San Carlos" or, or something else, and that was brought up multiple times at the general plan committee. So it's great that we're working on maybe livening them up a bit and making them a bit more welcoming, so.
I just had one quick question, Ms. Nelson. So are you saying that we're, we're going to be looking, when we go, if we approve this tonight, just at the primary gateways and the secondary gateways, and we're not going to be looking at the suggested additions? Or are we going to look, looking at everything?
Yeah, we'll also look at the suggested additions of
Okay, so we'll look at everything.
Those would be included.
Because, of course, everybody's got an opinion. I mean, some of the secondary ones are not my favorites, or maybe even one of the primaries isn't like, why would we put anything there? But anyway, I appreciate
Yeah, so it'll be
We're going to look like fifteen
It'll be this booklet of typologies, and then you could decide in your, in your budget discussions.
We're going to look at everything.
Right.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Looks good to me.
Okay. Will entertain a motion? That one?
Move to approve item 10A, approve a gateway design process proposal to conduct a design competition.
Second that.
Any objection? No objection? That's the order. Moving to 10B, consideration of a no-cost agreement, love those types, with San Mateo CCAG, for construction, operation, and maintenance of the Smart Corridor Intelligent Transportation System, and authorizing city manager to execute on behalf.
No cost.
Director Wile.
No cost agreement.
Director Wile. Happy Valentine's Day to you, sir.
Happy Valentine's Day to you.
I know you're an engineer, which would mean the same thing. City of San Carlos, what else do you need to know? It's
So my only purpose here tonight is to introduce Rich Napier, who's going to give you a brief presentation on the Smart Corridor concept and what it means to San Carlos. If I can find this presentation.
My question is terrible.
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and start while he's going through the computer.
Napier, welcome.
It's Richard Napier, Executive Director of the City-City Association of Governments, and I also have Gene Hidaki here, Program Manager for the project. Very, very simply, what the Smart Corridors project is, is a project that's, that's putting in some intelligence, some video cameras, some sensors, some signage on roadways, major arterias between 101 and El Camino Real, and also El Camino Real. It's, this shows you just some of the equipment, trailblazer signs, dynamic signs, fixed cameras, the like, and it serves two purposes. One of the purposes is doing a major instance, like, we seem to have, get 101 shut down in the southern part of county at least once every year, a year and a half of a major manner. It will allow efficient flush plans to be, to be established. Now, it's not to direct traffic off of 101, what it was, but unfortunately, a lot of traffic gets out in the neighborhoods, and they get lost. They can't find their way to El Camino Real, the type. This, this will help exploit that, and also it would optimize the, the green, the green signals. The purpose of the item tonight is, is basically to make it clear there's some equipment, we are going to upgrade the equipment, some of the controllers and some of the equipment at San Carlos, and that equipment is your equipment. There's some new equipment for the system, and make it clear that, you know, we're to maintain that. This is to be revenue neutral to the city of San Carlos, and actually provide you some, some significant benefit. On the, the second part of it, only about a half percent of the time, where you use it in this major calamity-type, type situation, on the 99 and a half percent of the time, all the cameras and signals can be coordinated from a computer, and this is provided, again, we provide all this free just by going online, and you can, you can see what's going on without having to go out into, get out into the neighborhood. You know, one of the real unspoken benefits of this, one of the things we want to do as part of the project is to negotiate some flexibility for the cities on El Camino Real. One of the things, one of the problems, and Mr. Roy, I'm sure he has let you know on numerous occasions, that Caltrans is not known as the most rapidly responding organization, and if you're wanting to change some signs because you have an event on, on law and it affects El Camino, and so we want to pre-negotiate for the cities an array of signal plans that then all you need to do is just call up Caltrans and they'll, they'll execute it and implement it, implement it for you, and I think that'll be a, a big benefit to you. Let's just get mainly to the item, and I'm running through this quick, because I know you've got better things to do tonight. Let me just read this. Identify the overall commitment and responsibilities regarding the ownership, operation, and maintenance of the Smart Corridors and the unique equipment located in the city's right-of-way, both during major incidences and day-to-day operations. As I said, you know, CCAG and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and Caltrans will be paying for those costs. One thing I do want to, I want to point out, we, as we went through, we've worked with the, your staff in determining locations and how to do it in San Carlos. So we did this with all seven cities in the county, actually, we're setting up these, these agreements with. We've actually completed the design, both on El Camino Real and, and in the cities, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be, be prepared to go to, go to construction. So we wanted to get, get the operation-maintenance agreement in place, so it's clear to the cities, no cost. We, I will tell you that we have the wherewithal to maintain it and keep it in good, in good operating order. Certainly, the Measure M, which was passed, motor vehicle fee this fall by the, by the voters, will provide a steady revenue stream for 25 years for the operation-maintenance of it. So we're asking for your approval of this agreement. It's similar to the agreement that we were executing with all seven cities in the county. So both Gene and I will be glad to respond to questions. Sorry if I spoke too fast, but I didn't want to take up too much of your time.
Appreciate that a bunch. I wish we had somebody who knew something about CCAG. Oh! Any questions from the, from the day ass? Mr. Royce?
Yeah, one question. Well, first of all, I really appreciate a lot of the work and the technology that's out there, improving some notifications of freeways and signage and backup plans, and all that are great. Where do you see this in, in five years? Because that's the public sector that's doing all this work and investments, and yet the private sector, like through cell phones and applications and Google and so forth, there's going to be a lot on the private sector that's going to give people tools. So are we working both ways, or do you see it going one way or the other long-term?
It's definitely not going to go one way or the other, because one of the things that, that occurs, you can get, you can get advance notice of an incident and then bypass around, if that's good, but sometimes you get jammed up, and then everybody just starts getting into the cities, how do they get around? And I'll just give you an, an instant. When the gasoline truck overturned, I was standing at the Redwood City train station, and this lady goes by, "Where's El Camino? Where's El Camino?" In her car. You know, they were just driving every, every which way. So I think it's going to be a combination of the two, and I do want to emphasize one thing, which I didn't say in my presentation, we're putting in a fiber optic backbone that will run from, as part of this, from San Mateo County over to Oakland, and the project boundaries, I should have said, is from three on it. We, we are rather behind in, in this county relative to the freeway. Now, I'm focused on the freeway relative to what's on the freeway. But I see him being, being complimentary, and, and I'll just give you one example of it. One of the things that a system like this needs to do is, you don't start moving people other places at the instance, you've got to start 15, 20 miles, 20 miles away. So, I really think that they will, they will dovetail together very well.
Thank you.
That's a great question, but, you know, a lot of the applications that we have on our phones, they, they basically get their information from the traffic management center in Oakland, and, and this is going to tie into that traffic management center, and it's got a, the intelligence has to come from somewhere, and this is part of that intelligence.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was a much better response than I gave.
Well, that can change.
Other questions?
My only question is, I imagine the security on a structure like this is going to be pretty intense, correct?
Yes, and let me just say, say two things on it. Yes, it is. And secondly, there's no data recording or video recording or any of that type thing. That's actually part of the, part of the agreement, because that's, that's not needed for its operation. So, there's not a, a Big Brother issue, which is one of the early questions that was raised.
Great. That was my second question.
Mr. Mayor, then I'd make a motion to approve a no-cost agreement with the Samatero City and County Association of Governments for construction, operation, and maintenance of the Smart Corridor Intelligent Transportation System.
Second.
Any objection? That's our order. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy Valentine's Day, and thanks for staying so long. Have a good night.
I'm going to miss you.
Thanks, Robert.
Sorry, just cranking along. Item 10C has been continued to February 28th. If there are any members of the public who did come to speak on 10C, we'll take that now. Seeing none, we're moving to 10D. Consideration of a resolution amending contract with Greg Rubens, Arison Dickinson, Cone and Land Zone for City Attorney Services. Good evening.
Good evening.
And happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, you, too. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Acting Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is a resolution to amend the compensation provisions of the city attorney's professional services contract. There's no change to the city attorney retainer, which is the majority of the contract. The two changes in compensation will vary depending on the need for legal services. The hourly rate for litigation will increase from 200 to 3, $230 per hour, and also included in the revised contract is funding in the amount of 2,500 for the city attorney to attend educational conferences. There is sufficient funding in the current budget to account for these two changes. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You very much. Gentlemen, any questions? Gentlemen, entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a resolution number 2011 dash-
Twelve.
A resolution of the city San Carlos, have the city council of the city of San Carlos amending contract for personal services.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes.
Any further business, Mr. Malpe?
None this evening.
Perfect. With that, we wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for staying. We got out before nine o'clock. Neener, neener. We are adjourned.